Counselor Shaughnessy said she's waiting to be let in.
And you're also to begin, sorry about that.
Okay. All right, it's Counselor Shaughnessy, hopefully he's entering soon. Today is February fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and it is seven oh three. We are starting our town council meeting. And this announcement in accordance with Mass. Federal Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty, must require whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. Hearing nine, Assistant Town Clerk, we can have a roll call, please.
Counselor. President.
President.
Bogan.
President.
Clark. Callum. Dagwamun. Rappi Sette.
President.
Hebert.
President.
Looked at.
President.
Neary.
I am present.
Neff.
Here.
Go on, see.
Here.
Star.
Here.
Ryan Hilber.
Here.
And Deborah Dagwamun, Councilwoman.
And you have twelve.
Okay, so if we can all stand, please, Sarah, if you could put up the flag. And Counselor Escobar Rappi Sette is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could also pause now for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And I would like to open up our meeting to public comment. Sarah, do we have anybody waiting for public comment?
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I hope the new year is off to a good start for everyone. First, my wife Anne and I would like to thank the town for its recent efforts to increase communication and engagement with Barnstable's residents. We recently tuned in and watched the presentations of the comprehensive wastewater management plan, the proposed sewer pump station at the intersection of Strawberry Hill Road and Craigville Road, Craigville Beach Road, and the accessory dwelling units presentation. We'd like to give particular kudos to DPW Director Santos and Finance Director Millen on their presentations and the excellent information they provide. Second, and further to the town's stated objective to improve communication engagement with its citizens, on January twenty-fifth and again today, yesterday, my wife and I wrote to the town council, Town Manager Ls and Planning Director Jenkins requesting the formation of a residential zoning task force to address zoning issues and changes which impact Barnstable's residential neighborhood. Similar initiatives are currently underway in several Massachusetts communities. Town of Eastham just announced the formation of a residential zoning task force, and in late twenty-twenty, Mass initiated a multi-year program which they call Shape the Future of Newton, to involve and keep citizens informed on zoning issues and change. Anne and I received favorable responses from several members of the council through our January twenty-fifth email. Additionally, we've spoken with and received support from numerous residents on the idea of a task force. These conversations have resulted in the plan, provide to you, the council, a group petition for the formation of a residential zoning task force. The submission of a group petition is provided for in our town code. We're excited to let you know about this plan because it reflects the citizen engagement which you have indicated you want to see on zoning and other issues, as well as the strong interest from residents working together with you on our town's residential issues and concerns. If anyone watching this evening would be interested to learn more about the petition or would like to sign on, they can send an email to ourzoning@gmail.com. That's ourzoning, O-U-R-Z-O-N-I-N-G, at gmail dot com, and someone will get back to you. Counselors, if we hear you from you later tonight that it's already your plan to form a residential zoning task force, you might render the need for the citizen petition unnecessary, and that would be terrific. However, we just wanted to share these plans that are underway because it lets you know how favorable the response has been from residents to your call for citizen engagement and involvement. My wife and I look forward to hearing your responses this evening to our request during the counselor's response to public comment this evening. Thank you again for allowing me to speak this evening. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Shulte. Appreciate your input, but have a great evening.
Next up for public comment, Josh.
Good evening, I am with everybody here tonight in support of the affordable housing project that is being supported by town council, of which I'm asking for your support. I'm twenty-six years old, have lived in the town since I was three years old, and am still living at home. I would hope that the next step for the town of Barnstable would be to look at affordable housing a little bit deeper and to support the housing that it would presume and would be able to grow in the town. The town would benefit from affordable housing, especially for those who are in their twenties and in early thirties looking for housing and still sustain a part, a full-time job on Cape Cod. I know for me, it would be very beneficial, as well as it would be supporting the local people who can have the capability to live locally and support the local businesses that need to have the people living locally to sustain public work and supporting all local businesses and, and beyond, to keep them local, people like me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramaj. Sarah, do we have anybody else in the queue? Anyone else, Sarah?
Uh, no, that's for public comment, thank you.
Thank you. Good, that being said, I'd like to open up for the, uh, I'm sorry, council response to public comment. Counselor Starr, please.
Good evening, thank, thank you, Mr. Levek. I would like to, I'd just like to thank Henry for putting his voice in there, and I know it's tough, I have, I have, I have a daughter who lives on Cape Cod, it's tough to find a place to live, and hopefully we can find more workforce housing. We'll, we'll work on that, Henry. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Counselor Bogan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo Counselor Starr's sentiments and commend Mr. Ramaj for appearing this evening. We are ever mindful that housing, it remains a difficult issue for all of us on the Cape, and I could assure you that we will do what we can to address that issue. As far as Mr. Shulte's comments, I, I, I first want to commend Bob and Anne for their continued commitment and dedication and their cogent comments, they're, they're always very helpful. I appreciate the suggestion. I'm gonna refrain from commenting specifically because I know that the Town Manager Report does have a portion dedicated talking about the process going forward with respect to zoning issues. That is particularly timing, given that I, I attended a Oscarville Village Association meeting on Tuesday, and the question was asked with what is the going-forward process? In that context, it was on accessory dwelling units, and I had to say, I, I wasn't sure because it certainly, to this point, has been a little different than the process that was adopted for short-term rentals. So I'll, I'll refrain from commenting at this time and look forward to the Town Manager's report and Mr. Jenkins' comment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Hebert, please.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. President, and likewise, I would thank you, Henry, or Ramaj, for please speaking up. And the truth is that unfortunately, a lot of the housing that is being produced right now, which, in the theory being that the more fair market rate housing we have, will allow for a little bit more competition. But we have a long way to go to create what I would think is really affordable housing. So any housing that we create is certainly helpful, but we want to keep a close eye on how do we create truly affordable housing for those who do so many services for us in this town and yet can't afford to buy a house and even can't afford to easily rent, and therefore we end up still staying at home or whatever we have to do to survive. Thank you, Henry, for coming to talk to us and supporting our efforts at affordable housing. And again, I certainly agree with Counselor Bogan, uh, with a hold on, I'm glad that the community continues to want to engage, to work with the town council and the town government, so, uh, and I know there will be more discussions on that. Thank you very much, thank you for coming to speak for us.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Anybody else? Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Levek. I'd like to say to Anne and Bob Shulte, echoing Counselor Bogan's comments, I really do appreciate your thoughtful remarks, not only in public comment, but also the well-thought-out and constructive emails that you frequently send to us, and I don't know that the other residents of the town know how much thought you give to some of these emails and discussions that you have, but I really appreciate it, and I'm thankful on behalf of all the residents for folks like you. Henry, awesome to see the unofficial mayor of Barnstable Village. I am so thankful, your remarks about affordable housing. And I would also like to encourage you, it's always great to hear from young people, so I want to encourage you to try to get more young people to start speaking up about these issues, because I think it's important we hear from you. You are the future of this town, so thank you so much to all of you for your comments tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy. Any other councilors to comment? And I, and I also want to thank, you know, this is actually my third meeting as president, but yet this is my first meeting with public comment, so I'm just glad someone came and participated, and, and Henry, I appreciate your input and regards to that. It takes a lot of courage, I think, sometimes people come and be involved and open themselves up and do that, so kudos to you for that. And of course, Bob Shulte, Mr. Bob Shulte, and I appreciate your constant input and passion for the town, and yes, and I hope that the upcoming presentation will address, as Counselor Bogan had alluded to, and Counselor Hebert, some of those concerns, so without further ado, it might be closed public comment. And open up for Town Manager Communications.
Good evening, Markell, Town Manager. This is the Town Manager's Communication for the period of January twenty-second through February fourth. We're gonna begin, I'm gonna ask Chief Sonnenbender to provide an overview of events that occurred on February second, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. To the President, members of the council, good evening. I'm here to briefly, speak briefly about the event that happened on Shufling Hill on the morning of February second this week. At approximately three fifteen in the morning, the Barnstable Police Department received a call from a newspaper delivery person who noticed smoke and flames coming from a house at eight forty-four Shufling Hill Road. We immediately dispatched police and fire services. Barnstable Police Officer Mark Cunningham was the first to arrive on the scene. When he pulled up, he could see flame within the front bay window of the house and heavy smoke coming from the house. He tried to get in the front door, felt the door was hot, couldn't open it, couldn't get in, went around to the side of the house, found a sun porch that was open, got inside. About this time, Officer Nelson Suve was also arriving and ran to the side of the building to assist Officer Cunningham. When they got to the, inside the solarium of the house, they found the kitchen door, and on the other side of the kitchen door was the resident of the home, sixty-nine years old, passed out at the kitchen due to heavy smoke and flames in the area. They forced the door open, were able to get in, get inside the building and remove the occupant from the house. Then Anne brought her outside where two more officers, Officer Gustavo Eloy and Officer Michael Lima, joined them in rescue efforts and trying to resuscitate the victim. Due to the extreme heat and smoke coming from the house, they had to take the resident across the street where they could safely administer lifesaving, lifesaving measures to her. When Tom Fire arrived, they took over lifesaving measures and transported the victim to the hospital, where she was then med flighted to a Boston-area hospital. Four of our officers to the hospital that night, three of whom, four, all four having smoke inhalation, three of whom are now back at work, and we still have one officer, Officer Nelson Suve, he's out of work briefly for an injury sustained during this rescue effort. I want to commend them, and we are in the process right now of assembling a award ceremony, and hopefully working with the town president, the town manager, and town council leadership come before you again here shortly in the near future and have an award ceremony and recognize these officers and the delivery person, because everyone pulled together that night. From, started with the delivery person who noticed and did the right thing, had his eyes open, making an observing where he was going, what he was doing that night, well, he was at work doing his routine tasks, and that started it all, and got the police involved in the fire service, and everyone was able to work together and save this woman's life, and I'm happy to report that she is in a Boston-area hospital and doing well, and I'm hoping that she's gonna have a full recovery. But what this, this also calls to my mind, and this has been a very difficult year for all of us, COVID and everything else, but it seems that the police service has been especially under the microscope this year with the events in Minneapolis, protests around the country, around the world, falling into question where the police stand, what they represent, who they, and what they're, and what our practices are. Even more locally, police reform legislation has passed, and we are now working to incorporate those changes into our policy and determine what we're gonna have to do with the state moving forward in the future of law enforcement. And even, even closer to today, the events of the sixth of January in the nation's capital, where it appears that calls into question the motives of some members of law enforcement, even locally, asking where we stand, what our beliefs are, and what we're, what we're all about. Well, I can tell you without a doubt where for these, where these four officers stood that day. They stood in a burning building at the risk of their own safety with no thought about it to go in and save somebody else's life. I'm extremely proud of the men and women, men and women I work with every day who come to work to do their shift and know in the back of their head that at some point, somewhere on the line today, tomorrow, ten years from now, they could be called upon in a similar fashion to put themselves at risk to preserve the life or safety of someone else who they don't know, and they'll do so without question, and they'll do so with bravery and courage like these four officers did that. And for that reason, I'm proud, and I can say to you that, and I can answer that question, and they answer that question, where do they stand? We stand beside, and sometimes in harm's way, and we are here to serve, protect, and support our community, not a political agenda, a racial bias, we are here for everyone, and that's the way it's gonna be. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Chief Sonnenbender, we look forward to those forward recognition. Next on my, thank you, sir. Next on my agenda is Assistant Town Manager Clyburn to provide an update relevant to COVID vaccination.
That's a tough one to follow. Good evening, Mr. President, Town Counselors, I'm Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn, here to give a brief update on COVID nineteen vaccination. Also here with us is Chief Peter Burke to help answer any questions you may have this evening. I want to start with the bottom line up front. There is a shortage of COVID nineteen vaccine. Locally, we are prepared to administer as many doses as the state is able to provide our community. We have put a tremendous amount of effort into planning for every possible scenario of vaccine availability. We simply need more supply. We are well aware of the anxiety limited supply causes, and we understand people are tired of being told to stay patient. Unfortunately, that's part of the message we needed to deliver. It will take time, more time than any of us wish, to provide vaccinations to every individual that wants them. But we will get there, and no one will be left behind. Healthcare workers got vaccinated, as did first responders and others in Phase One, but those numbers were small and vaccine was readily available. As you all know, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a three-phase plan governing the COVID nineteen vaccination role. This is the playbook, and we've got no path around it. Two weeks ago, I walked you through various states that still apply. Our local website, county website, and state website are still the recommended sources of information. Won't spend too much time this evening going over the phases and projected timelines as they continually change. Phase one vaccination includes healthcare workers doing COVID care, long-term care facilities, rest homes and assisted living facilities, first responders, congregate care facilities, including corrections and shelters, home healthcare staff, and other healthcare workers doing non-COVID care, in that order of priority. The projected timeline was Phase One, December through mid-February, Phase Two, February through April, and Phase Three, April through June. One significant change that has occurred to the rollout plan was jumping into Phase Two on one February. As I'm sure you're all very aware, all citizens over the age of seventy-five are now vaccine eligible. They are the number one priority in Phase Two. We ordered doses to begin Phase Two vaccinations as soon as the Commonwealth gave the green light to do so. We order doses every week and will continue to do so every week. Unfortunately, we have not received any Phase Two doses to date. Barnstable County has received a very limited amount of vaccine and has made it available through the state-mandated system for holding vaccination clinics. We're very fortunate to have a great relationship with the county, and one of their distribution sites is in our town at the Melody. Today, three hundred and seventy-five Phase Two eligible citizens received their first dose of vaccine. That is great, put it in context, in context, we have six thousand citizens over the ages. We need more supply. Unfortunately, the statewide system to get vaccination appointments was instructed to push the maximum amount of vaccine out to the community that becomes available. It was not set up to instill any sense of confidence that those trying to get an appointment would be able to do so if the supply became limited, which obviously it is. In fact, I go for, as far as to say it was set up such that pushing limited amounts of vaccine out would undoubtedly fail in the court of public opinion, particularly with senior citizens. By declaring that everyone over the ages seventy-five would be vaccine-eligible when the supply to vaccinate that group is on an order of ten percent, somewhat of a recipe for disaster. We've all heard about how difficult the state registration site is and how frustrated everyone has become trying to get an appointment, but it should have been a, should have been a foreseeable outcome. Even if we had extremely knowledgeable volunteers assigned one-to-one to every single person over the age of seventy-five, the end result of trying to get an appointment would be no for ninety percent. So nine out of ten people would be unhappy. How do we fix that? Simple answer is get more vaccine. Unfortunately, we have no control of it. Locally, we do our best to amplify our message up the legislative chain. We are ready, and we need more supply. For anyone who was not able to listen to the discussion that Senator Seer hosted last night with the sixty-five and over community, I would strongly encourage you to listen to it at your convenience. You can find it at www.senatorsear.com. Locally, we will do our very best to alleviate angst in the community by ensuring everyone, we will do our very best to make the process as good as possible, given the playbook we have been given and the supply that we've received. Transparency is important. We will communicate widely each time we receive a vaccine supply. We'll give as much notification as possible prior to the vaccine registration being opened. We'll help those that need it to register for those appointments, and we'll do our best to reassure those that don't get it that they will not be left behind. Everyone over the age of seventy-five that wants a vaccine will get one before we move to the next phase. While we have a multitude of plans in place, none of them work without vaccine supply, period. We can dive into any of the plans if you want, however, until we have an idea of the vaccine supply, it could potentially do more harm than good. We don't want to push out information on any particular scenario just to have that plan not come to fruition and further computers. So I think it's probably best to pause there and answer any specific questions that counselors have. Chief Burke is here to help with that, and this is understandably not the time to shower anyone with praise, but I must tell you all that we have the best of the best. I have a unique background that allows me to definitively tell you, you're not gonna find a fire, fire chief anywhere in the country, and I wouldn't want anyone next to me as we move through the weeks and months ahead. So with that, I'd like to open up any questions.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
This isn't a question so much as a comment that I want residents to hear and understand who are seventy-five and over or sixty-five and over and frustrated right now. The residents of the Mill Hill and West Charmeth. Phase One, I know because I have a ninety-four-year-old client there I care for, received their first shot on January thirty-first. They will not be receiving their second shot until March. This is a ninety-four-year-old in Phase One in congregate housing, so I just want people, as we're asking you to be patient, consider that there are people in Phase One who got their first shot on the last day and who are not yet fully vaccinated, so just, you know, be thoughtful of each other, and let's just try to all continue to be patient together.
Thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy. Always appreciate your point of view when it comes to. Anybody else? Without saying any further questions, this is Town Manager Clyburn, thank you very much for that great report. I actually would like to, if possible, bring back Chief Sonnenbender. If anybody had any questions or comments regarding to heroic activity of those oral officers, I don't know if it's for, if anybody wanted to comment on that, I thought I saw somebody had their hand up, so. Counselor Hebert, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And to both, to both chiefs, and thank you, obviously, for your leadership and the fine police force that you've developed and we work with and that we have, we're blessed with in this community every single day. And obviously, a very heroic move, fire is a very scary thing, and to have those officers do such a great job is very, very commendable, and congratulations to them. But I also want to thank you for taking a little extra time to talk about the situation nationally. And as you say, people are crushing our police force. I don't think anybody can question the dedication of our police force, and we are truly blessed with your leadership, but also with our very, very fine patrol people. From your newest recruit to your, your seniors, the leadership, and the dedication is just absolutely awesome. And at the same time, I also want to thank Chief Burke, and I totally agree with Assistant Town Manager Clyburn. Your department, under your leadership, we are truly a very fortunate community, so thank you all. And also to Andy, Assistant Town Manager, for your leadership in heading our COVID response. We have no, we have no complaints, and I hope that, as Counselor Shaughnessy said, that people can be patient, and you can't manufacture the vaccine. All we can do is pray that it comes sooner rather than later. Thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Anybody else? Counselor Callum, please, and then Counselor Dagwamun.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you much for your service, and, but particularly to rush into a building that's on fires. That is, was incredible to read the recap of that, I was so proud to be a member of this community, and I continue to be very proud and very thankful that we have such brave people that, that, that work for, for others and, and others that they don't know, and without knowing whether or not they're gonna be okay at the end of it, or the person they're trying to save, so, you know, you are appreciated very much, both by the area and, and police in this town. And I, I'm just saying it one more time because I think you can't get tired of hearing that, but the bravery is, is. But the bravery is, is, is palpable. It's amazing. Thank you so much.
Councilor Dagewell, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that, um, I work part-time and volunteer at a shelter here on Cape. And recently, the vaccine has been, um, proposed to us, um, staff who work with the, uh, victims, and I call them victims, in our shelter. Uh, the way they've decided to do it, I'm in the second group. The first group has already taken the vaccine and as most know, it's like twenty-one to twenty-six days between shots. You have to have two of them. And they decided to stagnate it so that there are some side effects to it. And they didn't want us all to take the shot at the same time because, because of some of the effect that you may have. And that way they wouldn't have to, um, try to have those shifts covered if all of our, all of us are having side effects, uh, from the vaccine. So in twenty-six more days, I'll be part of the second group who, who will take the vaccine. I also wanted to say to, um, Chief Sonnenberg, um, yesterday I took a CPR and AED um, training and certification. And one of the individuals who, uh, was the instructor has worked with the possible police department, I think, and as well as our fire departments here. And, um, was very knowledgeable and I think we just, I, I feel lucky to be a part of this town. Uh, and some of the things that you're, that they are doing, um, so many of the departments here. Barnstable is, uh, we are, um, proactive in so many ways and we've been recognized, um, and so many times for a lot of the things that we've done here in Barnstable. Barnstable has been a trailblazer for many of these, um, initiatives that, and problems that have faced, uh, many of the cities in town here. So I, you know, I just wanted to say kudos to everyone who's involved in getting the COVID testing as well as getting our citizens vaccinated, getting through this particular time in the history of our town.
Thank you, Councilor Dagewell. Any other comments? Thank you, Town Manager Owens. Back to you.
Thank you, Markell, Town Manager. Staying on COVID is a reminder, the Town of Barnstable continues to follow the orders and directives of our governor. The governor continues to frequently update the orders and directives. So I encourage everyone to go to the mask.govcovid website or you can go to the Town of Barnstable website and click on COVID and read these orders and directives. Um, as shared by the Assistant Town Manager, key officials of the town continue to meet daily to plan and implement the proper actions which are in step with the governor's orders and the Mass Department of Public Health guidelines. We continue to remind everybody to follow the state guidelines and take basic precautions, including wearing face masks, washing hands, maintaining proper physical distancing, and stay home and don't participate in work, sports, school, and other activities when you don't feel well. I continually hear that it, it, we have a very low incidence of flu and cold, probably because of these precautions. But when you do feel that way, it very well could be cold. So stay home, follow these, and hopefully, as described by our Assistant Town Manager, we will move through the vaccination phase in a timely manner. We are proceeding with the tasks in the budget action calendar for FY twenty-two as scheduled. A short one tonight relevant to that, and we're right on schedule. On February second this year, twenty twenty-one, standard importers assigned a triple-A bond rating with a stable outlook to our next bond issue and reaffirmed a triple-A bond rating to our outstanding debt. We plan to issue two-point-eight million taxable bonds this month for private road repair and another ten-point-eight million non-taxable bonds in March for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one capital project. Standard support will issue another report in March for the ten-point-eight next month. Finally, I want to thank our Finance Director, Mark Milton, with specific thanks to Treasurer and Tax Collector, Deb Landchat, who performs much of the work with our financial advisors structuring the bond issues and providing bond counsel all the information they need to certify those bonds that are non-taxable. The COVID-19 pandemic has sussitated our workforce to transition to a remote work environment in order to provide continuity of operations. While working remotely, it has become apparent that access to archived paper files is necessary to be effective. They were inaccessible to those working remotely because they're not digitized. It was determined that the best way to access those documents was to have the archives scanned and put into the database that could be accessed remotely. After a trial run using building permits, we determined that completing such a project in-house would take years and would not address our immediate or future needs, so we contracted for this service. With the assistance of our Finance Director, it was determined that digitizing our files was a project that would be eligible under the CARES Act for funding. And we proceeded. Our goal is to digitize over eight million documents and make them available not only to our staff, but to our public as well. The benefits of this project are immeasurable and will continue to benefit our organization and Barnstable residents here forward. In late December, Town Council appropriated funds for a rental registration monitoring system. The system, host compliance, was acquired in January and staff is in the planning phase of implementation with the vendor. This system will help ensure all rental property operators coming to compliance with existing regulations. Historically, we have used a strictly compliant-driven enforcement process. This tool will allow us to take a more active approach toward achieving compliance. Additionally, this system will help provide decision-maker data, decision-makers' data, uh, data that will better inform any future decisions that may be brought forth on regulating rentals in our community. The vendor is currently working with our assessing and IT staff to obtain a census record required for this staff. Additionally, inspectional staff are working with the vendor this month to implement the monitoring system, which we anticipate will be ready for testing in March. The following is tentative scheduled to implement. Uh, April, May, twenty twenty-one, implement online registration and monitoring, June twenty-one, initiate the complaint hotline and testing, compare and contrast the DOR list of registered tax parcels with host compliance and notice non-registered persons shifting toward active enforcement. We will keep you advised of our progress on this staff. In our effort to consider all options for meeting criteria five of the Green Communities Act, the town is looking into alternative energy compliance method that restricts the, uh, seven-eighty CMR, the Massachusetts State Building Code, which by reference standards uses the two thousand and eighteen International Energy Compliance Code. In order for the Town of Barnstable to be able to adopt a stricter standard than what is codified in seven-eighty CMR, it would have to do so in a manner that is consistent with Mass General Law, Chapter one forty-three, Section ninety-eight, which provides that the town manager may recommend to the board the adoption of rules and regulations imposing more restrictive standards than those established by the state building code. In this case, it would be a proposal for a more restrictive energy code. The building commissioner is preparing a letter from the town manager and board for adoption of such rules and regulations. We plan to submit said letter in February this year, February, and keep the town council advised of our progress on the matter. The Town Council has also requested a workshop to discuss the stretch code to gather a broader understanding of said code and its applicability here in Barnstable. And we're prepared to schedule that workshop. So, uh, on your, on your, um, directive and, and establishing a set date, uh, we'll be ready to go with it. Finally, I want to give you a Town Manager directive on the proposed fiscal policy and associated public communications for the comprehensive wastewater management plan. Uh, I've got the ability to share my screen. So. All right, hopefully everybody can see this as I move through my overview. Um, and again, this is my update, uh, on the proposed fiscal policy and associated public communication for our comprehensive wastewater management plan. I can tell you that each opportunity in, during my town manager communication, we will progressively share with you, um, how we are moving through each piece of this. The primary focus right now being the fiscal policy piece. I will digress a little bit though, just to, to, um, to go back and look at, you know, what we're doing, why we're doing it, and what decisions points we are at or asking, um, the council to consider at this point. It all goes back to our mission statement that's established by our Town Council. You know, our priorities focus on the protection of the Town of Barnstable's quality life and unique character, engaging our citizens and enacting policies that respond to and anticipate the needs of our community. We do this through sound financial management, open communications that engage our public with an equitable balance of resource allocation to improve the quality of life for our residents, businesses, and visitors. It's all about balance. That's the challenge, the balance. Our water resources are critical in achieving the balance of quality of life in Barnstable. And you will hear from me in all that I propose that every resident of Barnstable, every business in Barnstable, every visitor of Barnstable are in this together. We need to do it equitably, but we are all part of maintaining a quality of life. When we look at our Town Council's strategic plan, finance, and communication, our key components to all aspects of, of our priorities. But certainly, when we think about our water resources, whether it be public health and safety, infrastructure and assets, natural resources and environment, regulatory process, economic development, housing or education, it impacts every aspect of our strategic plan, our priorities as a community, and our mission to maintain that quality of life. I always go back to the townwide look at our water resources. I know you're familiar with this. There may be people who are not that are viewing. We have five major, um, recharge areas to our embayment systems. We have one major embayment system on the north side, Barnstable Harbor. Fortunately for us, that isn't identified as impaired at this time. And we will do every, it will be a priority that it never becomes impaired relevant to this issue of nutrient loading. Along the south side of Cape Cod and certainly within the Town of Barnstable, starting, uh, on the left or the west side, Pompano-Sichu String Bay, which we share with Sandwich and Mashpee, Three Bays, which we again share with Sandwich and Mashpee, Shenovo River East Bay, which is entirely within the Town of Barnstable, and then Lewis Bay, which we share with the Armistice, are all significantly impaired by nitrogen. I also show on this map those can areas. That's where our drinking water supply comes from. When you take out the Great Marsh, half our town sits on top of our drinking water. We live on top of the water we drink. Everything we do in Barnstable, every resident, impacts our water resource. Since two thousand and sixteen, the town staff, led by our Department of Public Works, has been meeting with our citizenry on the development of our comprehensive wastewater management plan, often referred to as our CWMP. Uh, this is a regulatory-required comprehensive plan. And it looks at identifying water quality requirements and then identifying solutions to address concerns related to water quality. Um, whether it's traditional or non-traditional or other, like management, looking at zoning, looking at health regulations, et cetera. It requires a regulatory review and approval, which we have done and we are at the final stage of. It recommends capital improvement, which the Town Council has seen regularly as we progress through the, the preparation of the plan. And you have seen us roll out in the discussion of implementing this full CWMP uh, o- o- over the next three decades. It also identifies funding and financial mechanisms. And then ultimately, we implement solutions once authorized by our Town Council. It's got to be an adaptive and changing plan. It needs to be flexible. We chose to lead it in-house by using our staff. We have an exceptional staff. Not many communities anywhere could have taken this on. So what has been done is exceptional. We augment with consultant. This allows us to have in-house experts that can keep us adapting to the ever-changing environment that we are presented with here in the Town of Barnstable. And not just technology, but to adapt to regulatory changes, financial changes, and the needs of our community. This is a thirty-year plan. We review it on a five-year increment so that we can make sure that we've made those changes and adapted as the conditions change in our community. Director Santo shared this map with you in his last update. It's primarily the three phases of the CWMP. Each phase, ten years, red to green to yellow. There's also some area out on the west side of town, um, that's being reviewed as to how we might address that. We may have opportunities, um, at Joint Base Cape Cod or other. Um, and we are also contemplating that as part of meeting. We've also asked our Board of Health a fundamental question regarding, um, are, are traditional Title V onsite systems adequate to providing the town sanitation and environmental protect? And where, on which properties are they and on which properties are Title V not? Many of our residents immediately think about the Title V system and what they may have paid to repair a system or what they may pay for a brand-new system. Title V systems do not reduce nutrient load the way that certainly our wastewater treatment plant in Hyannis does. But in general, the way that these more advanced treatment systems can. The core of the problem is nutrient loading. In saltwater, it's nitrogen. The primary source of nitrogen is our urine. It goes out of your house. If you sue it, it goes to the treatment plant. We treat it down to five parts per million. And fortunately for us, our Town Council recently has approved us to go forward with looking at how we can treat it down to two to three. Title V systems release it into the environment somewhere in the high thirties, forty range. That is not adequate to help us meet the regulatory requirements in our very sensitive. That is not adequate to help us meet the regulatory requirements in our very sensitive water system, specifically salt. We begun a discussion with our Board of Health, how to proceed relevant to this, this use of Title V systems in an environment that Title V systems weren't designed to improve. We also have ongoing discussions coming up the end of next week with the Department of Environmental Protection. I shared this map with you. It's from a former current, but, but prior study that was done that really broke our embayments. I talked about the five into sub-embayments, and where it says a hundred percent, you've got to remove all the nitrogen from those areas. Now, an onsite system of any kind isn't going to get you there. You've got to move that wastewater out of those areas. So when you look at Director Santos's current plan, you're going to see that many of these high percentage areas are the areas that are sewered in Phase One, Two, or Three. We're also looking at densities. We're looking at how we run the sewer so that it can be cost-effective for those who receive the physical sewer. As we move forward with, obviously, the certain portions of our town are much less dense, have larger lot size, therefore the per lot cost as we move through these discussions could potentially be a lot more than where we have density. But we've also got to link it up to what outcome are we trying to achieve? We're trying to remove, reduce the nutrient load to our saltwater embayments so that we can comply with the regulatory requirements, and more recently, we can avoid potential lawsuits, which we have two formal processes in the filing of a notice of intent, potentially file a lawsuit, which we have never had occur in, in the past relevant. Our specific focus right now is on fiscal policy. The town council held a special meeting on October twenty-ninth to discuss the proposed fiscal policy considerations in support of implementation of this C W M P. Fiscal policy under consideration would establish how to equitably distribute the cost of the C W M P. Now fortunately, our leadership, both through town council and our management, has established significant revenue sources in the last decade to offset some of the costs of the C W M, fifty-seven percent of the cost of the C W M. So as we move forward in this discussion, what we're looking at, what policy we want to establish, is how to pay for the remaining forty-three percent of the cost of the C W M. I put forward a proposal to town council. We introduced it back at that October twenty-ninth meeting, and it's really a two-step process. The first is to review and approve hopefully a proposed sewer assessment ordinance, which includes a sewer assessment to each individual property receiving the planned sewer. Once we review and know whether that's approved or not, we can move logically to the second discussion, because that proposed sewer assessment is not a hundred percent recovery of that forty-three percent. It is a portion of that cost. The difference would be, we would look to the use of our general fund to pay the remaining portion of the cost associated with proceeding with the C W M. I've recommended that the town council consider a debt exclusion vote by our community to cover a portion of that cost. If the council chooses to proceed with that, then that would go to the voters, and the voters would have to decide. I do want to say though, that use of the general fund either through a vote of our public, a support of our council, and a vote of our public, or use of the general fund without that, will impact every single resident of our town. They can choose to support the debt exclusion or not, but the loss, the potential loss of resources to fill that gap, to ultimately get us to that at forty-three percent, will certainly be an important discussion for us to have moving forward as a community. So what are we doing relevant to this first step, this proposed sewer assessment communication and public engagement effort? We've made ourselves available, and we're going to reach out. We've talked to many of our civic associations. We'll continue to communicate with them, not limiting to them, to village association and all other groups at their request to review this C W M P with a focus on the sewer assessment ordinance. We've updated our homepage, and I was going to try to pull it up here, but I, I don't want to go that far right now. If you go on our homepage, if you look off to the left-hand side, you're going to see something that says Barnstable Water Quality. Click on it, go through it, take a look at it, residents, certainly counselors. We will be using this as a primary point on our website for residents to be able to find relevant information. I hope you find it user-friendly, accessible, and hopefully it'll help you be able to navigate the tremendous amount of information that we have on our website, but centralized in that. We've scheduled virtual town manager review of the proposed sewer assessment ordinance. Originally, I was trying for earlier in February, but given the demand and, and the, you know, complete use of our, of our website, of our, of our Zoom capabilities, of our Channel eighteen, I, I had to move it a little further into February. I didn't want to get into trying to bump scheduled meetings or hearings. So first, first scheduled town manager review will be on February twenty-fifth. The next one is already scheduled for March twenty-fifth. It'll be a Zoom webinar. It'll be aired live on Channel eighteen, streamlined on our webpage. It'll be available as a Facebook Live event concurrently so that people have multiple ways to view the presentation. We're adding to the existing town property lookup database, which currently identifies you if you're on sewer or not. So if you go in, that's the, that is the most used link in our, on our webpage by people. So right now, if you go in, you go into your property, you call up the details on your property, look over to the left, and it says whether you're sewered or not. We're going to be adding to that, hopefully by mid-month. We're going to be adding to that, so it'll show you if you're not sewered, are you planned to be sewered, and if you are planned to be sewered, in which phase. So we're, we're working on that. A lot of people don't even know whether this, I actually, used to get a lot of calls when I was in a prior position, asking whether they were sewered or not. So that's one easy way for you to go in and take a look and see if your property or a property is sewered, or if it is, and it exists right now. We're going to enhance. We plan to share public comment and suggestions as they are compiled. We plan to modify the proposed sewer assessment ordinance based on comments and suggestions gathered during this public engagement effort. We've also already reached out and had two meetings with, with CFAC, which I've shared with town council, and they've made their supportive recommendations with some changes. You know, we're, we're going to be meeting with the chairs of all the major committees during this time. I recognize that this isn't public, but these are certainly important stakeholders that can help, you know, we can help them, and they can help us by them understanding what we're doing, and their sharing feedback to us, and sharing this information to others as they proceed. We plan to bring forward a proposed draft sewer ordinance for your consideration for a first read on April first, two thousand and twenty-one, and I'll keep you advised as we progress. That's my update.
Town Manager L, before we go to Director Jenkins, let's open the floor. If anyone has any comments or comments to Town Manager Forte, to Town Manager L. Counselor Star, please.
Thank you. Mr. L, I had a question about the Green Communities Application. So we're, we're writing, we're going to write an energy code that's stricter than the code we had that's there now, and we're going to write a code that's different than every other town in Massachusetts. So, so my question is, so you said in three weeks, you're going to have a, you're going to send a letter to the state. Is, is the letter, I wasn't clear about the letters. The letter going to have the new building code, what you're proposing in the letter?
The letter is to show, to ask them for us to proceed this way, and Brian, I'll, I'll share the letter in draft with you, Counselor Star, so you can see exactly what's in there.
We do have Building Commissioner Florence with us. Would you like to comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the town council. Manager L answered that question adequately.
Great, thank you. Town Manager L, Mark, if, would it be possible to maybe just schedule that workshop possibly for sometime in March? I think that would be a good time.
Yes, at, at your, you, you, I, I would defer to you to tell me which meeting in March, and I would be more than happy to do that.
I think it's possible, the second meeting in March. We'll give some time to put together the workshop and have a discussion.
Yes, sir. Second meeting in March.
Excellent. Thank you for your question, Counselor Star. Any, oh, Counselor Shawna, please.
Thank you, President Lovett. My question is also to do with the Green Communities Act, and I guess it's a two-parter. The first part is, why are we wanting to be stricter than stretch code? And the second question is, why have a workshop on the stretch code if that's not what we're planning to adapt? Thank you, Inspector Florence.
I'm going to go to you, Mr. President. So the Green Communities Act, Criteria Five requires that you have a, a code that is stricter than the existing building code. The existing building code is not the stretch code. It's a, it's a code, as Manager L said earlier, the two thousand and eighteen Energy Compliance Code written by the I C C. So what we'd be doing is writing a code that's more strict than that and different from the stretch code.
Okay, but not necessarily stricter than stretch? Or comparable?
Yeah, probably comparable is what I, the way I'd say it.
So if that is allowed by the state, does that mean with that adaptation of the code, we're still going to have to use the same HEMs inspectors, or as long as, are we going to, and will the town then provide the inspections that's, we're outside of stretch?
The, the hope is that they will accept letting us use our inspectors to do the inspections.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Counselor Rapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark, and for your presentations. With regard to the Board of Health, and asking the question about Title V being adequate, you yourself said they're not adequate with regard to removing nitrogen. Are, are you saying that the Board of Health could put restrictions to not allow any discharge within the estuaries, albeit new development in that area, or, can you explain a little bit more?
Well, there's a whole bunch of parts to what you just asked me. The intent of the discussion with the Board of Health is, should we, the Board of Health does have the ability to establish nitrogen-sensitive areas, that therefore would require, I, I believe it would be best available technology to be implemented on an onsite system, but it also depends on what criteria you're establishing relevant to that nitrogen-sensitive designation. Nobody has done this in Massachusetts, that I am aware of. D E P is the other entity that can do this, so it's Boards of Health and D E P. Interestingly, once again, not unlike the stretch code, Barnstable isn't afraid to step out, look at its specific needs, and consider off.
To, I've just.
Having discussions with the Board of Health, I'm sorry, Jessica, about that.
So you're saying that they could supersede the state with regard to enforcement or regulations with regard to?
Yes, they could establish nitrogen-sensitive areas. We're not looking to do this blanket. We're looking to look very specific, and I believe Director Santos may be able to add into this, but I believe he's looking at the sub-embayments and very specific areas where it may be beneficial to do. Why, why it may be beneficial is that some of these areas aren't going to be sewered for twenty or thirty years, yet every day, these, the nitrogen is introduced into the system. The risk we run by doing this is that sometime in the future, if we're able to sewer and then transport, it could be that duplication of requirement. So we need to be mindful of that, and again, we need to be looking at what our community's needs are, both our residents and quite honestly, our environmental systems, and we need to come up with a plan that reflects that. This isn't something that anybody else is struggling to do, quite honestly, and that's why next week, I'm meeting with Dan Santos and the Deputy Director of D E P and his staff to talk through these issues.
Great, thank you, and I, and I applaud you for having the Board of Health right there along with you.
Yes.
Excellent. Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Lovett. I did want to thank the Town Manager Mark L for participating in the PFAS discussion and making it available on the team for watch. I also wanted to applaud the Town Manager for the presentation and his very novel bulletin last night over the vaccine information that was hosted by Senator Julian Seer and others. So thank you for, for making Barnstable resources available for that. By the way, will any of that information that was on the telephone last night be available for the public, for those who missed it?
Well, there is access now through, I think we shared that website, but I'll make sure it's repeated, Counselor Clark, and I'll talk to Lynn, Paul, about providing a link even on our own site, okay?
Thank you. That was helpful.
Yes.
Any other comment, please. Vice President Shinet, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, and thank you, Mark, for a very comprehensive report. I was very intrigued by the digitization project of eight million documents. Overwhelming. I, I'm hoping that the, the contractor who is assisting in this project can also be involved in the indexing of all those documents, because I can imagine it's one thing to scan them, but to be able to find them is going to be as much of a challenge, but I'm assuming that that's all part of that project.
I, I've got our building commissioner here to, he, he is actually helping lead this effort with us, so Brian, are you still out there?
I am, thank you, and I give Mr. President to you. So, thank you, Counselor Shinet, that's a great question. Yeah, the, so there's an indexing company that'll come in and they'll scan all the documents, put it into an index, and then there's a, an access and retrieval company that, it's called Laserfish. We already have Laserfish as a, as a product here in town, and it serves about forty of our employees, but the, the Laserfish will be upgraded so that it'll address all of our employees, and we'll also be able to provide, as Manager L said, access to our records from the outside, from the public. So, yeah, it, it does both for our project.
So Commissioner Florence, I know that some documents are huge. Are they able to take everything that you have and minimize it and digitize it? Is that the intent?
Yep, we are, we have rolled documents for our construction plans, some for like Everly that, that over two hundred units in the Indian Independence Park. Those plans are probably four, two sets of four hundred-page thick plans. It's a very large set of plans, they're about, they're thirty-six by forty-eight inch plans, and those are all getting scanned, yep.
Great, well, thank you. I'd love to hear progress on that throughout the year. And I just had one other comment, Mark. I just wanted to applaud staff in putting together the site on the homepage for the water resources. It's.
site on the homepage for the water resources. It's wonderful to be able to click one place and access all sorts of the resources that we've had all along, but to be able to navigate much more easily. So, thank you.
Yes, and I, I know that it is, uh, it's nice to have visuals too, so you can see and, and link to wastewater, and there's a lot more information. There's drainage, there's, there's drinking water. Um, and then, if you go all the way to the bottom of the page, you're able to access the 208 information or, um, Mass Estuaries Project Report, which, you know, those were the basis for, for that, that sub-invented plan that I gave you, um, this evening. And you can go and you can look at the science that started back, you know, shortly after 2000, that supports us coming now to you with this plan of implementation to address those concerns and those payments. So, all of that information you can find there. We're actually putting together a little tutorial that employee on will, I'll be giving regular updates because we're gonna be developing this site, but a little tutorial for somebody who goes in, so we can walk them through and we can show them how to find whatever they look. So, um, I hope that it's an effective communication tool. I know especially during COVID, it's one of our primary ones. So, uh, it'll be invaluable hopefully as we move forward.
Thank you, Vice President Jeanette. Any other comments, please, Town Manager L? Thank you. Uh, I know it was very detailed, and I know it was a lot of, uh, information tonight. I just thought, um, leadership and the guy, and along with the Town Manager's Office, it was a good idea to make sure all this information was forward and that, especially the CWMP and also too, wanted to recognize the rental registration monitoring system that got brought up and updated. Thank you for that. I know there's a lot of questions in regards to what we're gonna be doing, in regards to short-term rentals and the communication of that. Um, and how we're gonna move forward and collect data is paramount. So, I'm glad to see that that's gonna be in effect, um, especially before we take off for the summer season. So, appreciate that. Um, and I was gonna mention, along with the, uh, talk about the Board of Health's role in addressing that Title V. Moving forward, um, if there's no other comment, Director Jenkins, would you like to do your part?
Yeah, that concludes my, um, I mean, that's my entire manager communication, so, uh, unless asked, I won't plan on returning, and I'll turn it over to Elizabeth Jenkins to provide information as identified in each of the bullets on your agenda relative to zoning and our local comprehensive. So, thank you.
Much better introduction, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Town Manager L. Thank you, President Levesque, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. I will start tonight on zoning amendments, um, if I may, requirements, um, communications and expected updates. I have a presentation I'm going to share my screen. So zoning, um, zoning is a means of land use control and our community's primary tool for implementing land use policy objectives, including rate of growth, housing and economic development policy, et cetera. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, also known as the Zoning Act, provides a specific procedure that a municipality must follow when adopting or amending a zoning ordinance. I'll note that there are other tools that influence zoning, for example, Mass General Law 40B, comprehensive permits and the regulatory agreement process. But for, for the purpose of tonight's conversation, we're gonna focus on the statutory process, um, under the Zoning Act. So where does a zoning amendment start? The process of adopting or changing a zoning ordinance begins with filing a proposal with the Town Council, and that proposal may be initiated by the council itself, uh, which is the customary process in our community, but also the planning board, the zoning board, and individual owning land in the community, uh, the regional planning agency, which is the Cape Cod Commission, or by the request of registered voters. The Zoning Act sets out requirements for public notice for adoption or amendment of a zoning ordinance. And these requirements apply both to amendments of the zoning map as well as amendments to the text of the zoning code. Public hearings are required to be held by the planning board and the Town Council when considering a zoning amendment. Each one of these hearings has to be noticed in the newspaper twice prior to the hearing and at least two weeks before the hearing date. And the town places those notices typically in the Barnstable Patriot, but sometimes also in the Cape Cod Times. So again, the process as we know it is introduction at Town Council, a, a planning board recommendation at a public hearing, and a Town Council vote at a public hearing. More specifically, at the planning board, the planning board plays an advisory role in the process. Again, they must consider the zoning amendment at a public hearing. Once they do this, they submit a report with recommendations to the Town Council, or if the planning board does not submit that report, 21 days, um, 21 days can elapse after that hearing without a recommendation, and then the, the item can proceed to Town Council. The vote on the, on the planning board recommendation is a majority of the members present. Town Council, when considering a zoning amendment, Mass General Law provides that no zoning ordinance or amendment thereto shall be adopted or changed except by a two-thirds vote of all of the members of the Town Council, again, after holding a public hearing. There's some exceptions to this, um, including protest and the new housing choice provisions. We'll certainly keep the council informed, um, if any of those circumstances arise or do. So again, the statutory process for consideration of a zoning amendment, introduction at Town Council, planning board recommendation at a public hearing, and Town Council at a public hearing. So while we understand this is the customary and required statutory process, we know that a tremendous amount of work can go into putting together an ordinance for consideration before it reaches this formal process. Which leads me to my second topic, which is communications. The town believes that it's imperative that we connect with our community when, when a zoning item is prioritized for discussion in ways that may include public meetings to provide information and allow discussion on potential zoning items, making drafts available for review at various stages in the process, and providing opportunity for questions, comments, and to connect with staff on, on those drafts. And of course, advertising the availability of all these opportunities through our town communication channels, such as our website, Channel 18, E-News, Town Manager Communications, and our social media. So when a, when a zoning amendment goes into the formal statutory process, we're, of course, will comply with the statutory notice requirements, but also know that we will use those typical town communication channels to communicate when there are zoning amendments that are moving forward that have stuff, that will have town-wide impact and interest. We've talked in this venue a number of times about a policy that would enhance the statutory notice requirement. And today we'd like to offer one small enhancement that we feel will increase the level of communication with our residents. Electronic communication and email is a critical form of modern communication, and we commit to making this a, a regular part of our process. We'd like to propose allowing for opt-in zoning updates, where residents can opt-in to email notices when the town publishes announcements of all proposed zoning amendments. We would use this as well to provide notice of other public processes that, around zoning, those communications that happened prior to an ordinance, starting that statutory process, and maintaining a corresponding webpage where, where residents or other, other interested parties can find, reliably find that zoning information. So a brief update on the zoning amendments that are currently in process. We are considering, again, in the, in the early stages, a zoning amendment to allow accessory dwelling units in the town of Barnstable. There've been a number of meetings of the zoning and regulatory committee to talk about this policy, and the planning board, together with the Planning and Development Department, held a public information session to take questions. We also continue to have the drafts posted on the town website and a box on the town website where residents can submit comments or questions on the ordinance. Currently, town staff is packaging up all of the questions and comments that we got at that public meeting, as well as those submitted for the website, providing answers to those questions in a frequently asked questions document that will publish for, that will publish for the public and for the council on our website. And we're evaluating the impact, um, of the new housing choice provisions that were passed in the new economic development bill, what impact those have on the draft, on the draft ordinance, and we'll continue to provide the council update as that progresses. The other proposed zoning amendment that we have in process is the Downtown Hyannis rezoning proposal, also known as the Form-Based Code. Um, this has been, um, a, a significant effort that planning and development staff has been working on with a number of stakeholders in the community, including the Economic Development Task Force. Uh, we're again finalizing changes to the proposed ordinance, um, evaluating again the impact of the new housing choice provisions on this, on this ordinance, and we hope to publish a draft for consideration by the public in the coming week. We have a number of potential zoning amendments, um, that are being talked about here in town but have not started any formal process. A review of our non-residential zoning in, in the regional commercial centers, several amendments to comply with regulatory requirements passed down by FEMA and other organizations. And we've been discussing internally the need for maintenance of our zoning code. Um, the zoning code is a document that needs to be cleaned up and maintained over time, and staff would like to propose that we bring forward amendments to the council in the future to do that ongoing maintenance. So again, these are discussions right now. We'd like to put them on the table and know that we will follow the communication process that we've committed to going forward as all, as all of these move forward. That concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you to Director Jenkins. Great presentation. Very thorough. I appreciate that. Also, as well as the option that, uh, Councilor Shawnessy, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Hello, Director Jenkins. Uh, my question is with regard to the Form-Based Code item that you raised. Is the plan that that only pertains to the Downtown Hyannis area, not the entire town of Barnstable?
That's correct. It's a revision to what we call our Downtown Hyannis zoning districts currently, the zoning districts that apply within the growth incentive zone. Um, those set of zoning ordinances have always acted, um, as we like to say, as sort of a code within the code. Um, we thought that though the, the urban infrastructure in Downtown Hyannis um, is best suited to looking at a Form-Based Code, um, and the best place to try this, this new and innovative zoning model in the town of Barnstable. So, while we are proposing to move forward with the adoption of Form-Based zoning, we also took the opportunity to listen to our community and, and, and respond to various other adjustments in some of the other districts where we're not adopting that full form-based model, but are, but hope to expand some of the allowed uses and allow for more flexibility, for more redevelopment potential in downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you too. Councilor Rapport, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Elizabeth. The information, um, with regard to, uh, a corresponding webpage to inform the public on all these efforts. Um, I know that you have to by law advertise, um, in the newspaper, and you, you stated that. Are you planning to put those advertisements on a webpage so you can read them and enlarge them, and you don't have to read, you know, size eight font and, and be searching for them in the classifieds or even have to, uh, purchase a paper if you can? Um, because I think that would be a great idea if your legal advertisements were also online, um, not only for zoning changes, but for anything regulatory that requires the, uh, the notification, but.
So that's the intention and purpose of this proposal, Councilor Rapport, is to take that, that statutory notice requirement, which now feels very antiquated. I know, publishing, you know, sort of a, a legal document in a newspaper and modernizing that form of communication into one that's accessible to the public that they can find in their email, that they can easily find in places that make sense to them, on the planning board website, on the Planning and Development Department website. Um, so that form of communication is much more. Yes, that is absolutely the intention of that, is to not only broaden in a, in an equitable way who we inform of, of zoning amendments coming forward, but to do that in a more modern and accessible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councilor Bogan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Uh, just a couple of questions. Um, I don't know if you heard, um, Mr. Schulte's comments earlier, um, or my comments, where I said I was gonna refrain from commenting on his comments until I heard what you had to say. But one of the issues that I've been confronted with by residents is particularly on the ADU situation, where do we go from here in terms of process? Um, and I certainly appreciate, as I understood what you said, the intent to take some of the questions and concerns that came out of the informational meeting with the planning board and formal, formulate, uh, an FAQ section on the website. But do you have a sense of, in terms of the process beyond that, what you have in mind, number one, and number two, Mr. Schulte was speaking in terms of, like, you know, the process that we use in, as I understood in, uh, in Eastham and Newton, which included a task force that had citizens be part of that process. If you could comment on that, or if Mr., uh, the Town Manager wants to comment on that, that would be helpful, so that I can respond to people when they ask.
I've taken it under review. I've asked my staff, Park House, Town Manager, sorry, uh, taken it under review. I've asked our staff, including Elizabeth Jenkins and Karen Ober and others, um, look at what's being done in other communities, and, um, certainly, um, with the authority to create this, I don't know what falls with the Town Manager. Um, but I would certainly advise, um, Town Council on the applicability, and I think that at this point, we're trying to achieve what you've identified in your strategic plan, which is, um, a, a solid communication plan that engages our citizens. And, um, I'll await their response and, uh, look at what works best and then make recommendations.
I, I appreciate that, and I will say that, um, I do find the, what I'll call the focus on public engagement, uh, over the last few meetings to be refreshing. Uh, that's not a commentary on, on, on the prior administration, since you know, I think the world of our former president as well. But I think we all, we do all of ourselves a, a better service if we can, uh, have the public understand and appreciate that we do, um, want their engagement and in fact, will consider their comments. And we, if we happen to disagree on certain issues, we can explain why. Uh, but I, I look forward to, uh, inviting them to the table and, and inviting their thoughts in this manner going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Logan. Any other? Councilor, comments? Councilor Shawnessy, please.
All right, this is going back to the COVID vaccine. I did want to say that Johnson &amp; Johnson, two days, submitted theirs to the FDA for emergency authorization. Single shot, so hopefully more help is on the way.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for that update. Uh, any other comments, please? Yeah, great presentation, Councilor, uh, Director Jenkins, and, uh, I really appreciate the, uh, the effort you put forth to put that together. Town Manager L, any other comments? Um, Town Manager L, any other comments?
Nope. Just back to Elizabeth, the local comprehensive plan.
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, councilors. Um, very excited tonight to be here to talk about, um, local comprehensive planning in the town of Barnstable. I have another presentation and I'm gonna show my screen. So, local comprehensive planning. What is a local comprehensive plan and why is it important to our community? Um, a municipality's local comprehensive plan defines a long-term vision for the community by anticipating and guiding the rate of new development and coordinating it with necessary capital facilities. Comprehensive plan defines the unique values we seek to protect and encourages balanced economic development. In addition to articulating a vision and growth policy for our community, the local comprehensive plan helps coordinate, guide, and balance policy decisions related to development, infrastructure, the economy, and resource protection. The local comprehensive planning process will help coordinate and define the interrelationships between our various plans and initiatives in town, including our Town Council strategic plan, our capital improvement plan, our comprehensive wastewater management plan, among others. We just heard the Town Manager in his presentation of the, of the comprehensive wastewater management plan speaks to the, speak to the town's mission statement. Protect Barnstable's quality of life and unique character, engage our citizens, and enact policies that respond to and anticipate the needs of our community. The local comprehensive planning process is at the core of this mission statement by engaging our citizens and interpreting their values into actions and policies that we can consider moving forward. The town last updated its local comprehensive plan in 2010, although most of the research and community outreach that was done to put this plan together occurred several years earlier. It's a customary best practice for a community to, to update a local comprehensive plan every 10 to 15 years. But I think there are reasons that doing this update now is critically important. And I'm going to come back to those in a moment. But first, I'd like to talk about local comprehensive plan content. The content of a local comprehensive plan, at least here in Barnstable, will be guided by the Cape Cod Commission's local comprehensive plan regulations. And the, the Cape Cod Commission will also look for our plan to be consistent with its regional policy plan. A local comprehensive plan consists of a vision statement, existing conditions, analysis, and data, goals for the community, capital facilities plan, a plan to address the housing needs in our community, and a targeted action plan. And while not a specific chapter in the local comprehensive plan, the overriding element of a local comprehensive plan is community participation to inform all of these sections. Comprehensive plans are actually required by the state of Massachusetts for communities. These are the, the elements of a local comprehensive plan that a community is required to address. Now, the Cape Cod Commission, again, the Barnstable being a community subject to the Cape Cod Commission Act, has organized these a bit differently and enhanced these under the regional policy plan. They provide elements categorized in three areas: natural systems, built systems, and community systems. And they asked the town to study each one of these areas. So why update our local comprehensive plan now? Again, the Cape Cod Commission in 2018 completed a comprehensive update to their regional policy plan. They also updated the local comprehensive plan regulations that will guide the formation of local comprehensive plans across Cape Cod. These are, these will provide the framework that the town needs to be able to move forward in this process. Additionally, we just hadn't had a new federal census and that data is being released every day, providing new information on the demographics and needs of our community. There are several other factors that weren't, that we weren't considering as critically in 2010 when we did our plan, that we're looking to respond to now. First, that the town has responded to the Cape's adopted regional wastewater planning framework by developing our comprehensive wastewater management plan. The impacts of Suring in our community are going to have significant impacts on land use, development pressures, and growth. And we, as a community, should come forward with a unified vision of how we're going to respond to these challenges. Currently, we also have the need, the urgent need, to respond to a statewide housing crisis and make sure that we're, we're addressing and providing a diverse range of housing needs in our community. Climate resiliency has also become a central regional priority, central regional policy priority. Climate resiliency was not even a chapter in our 2010 local comprehensive plan. And again, a local comprehensive plan will continue to guide the interrelationship between plans and efforts across all disciplines in our community. So the process for, for updating a local comprehensive plan is, uh, at first, the formation of a local comprehensive planning committee. The statute provides that this can be the planning board, but the Town Council can also put together a separate committee to guide this process. Once the process is completed, a local comprehensive plan does need to be adopted by the planning board, by the Town Council, and then the town would look at getting the Cape Cod Commission to certify their, to certify our local comprehensive plan as being consistent with the Cape Cod regional policy plan. So a strategy for moving this forward. Um, I'd like to propose that we move forward with an effort to update our local comprehensive plan and that we do that in two parts. Um, the first part being a look at data and existing, existing conditions and community visioning. A second part to follow being setting out goals, a targeted action plan, and performance measures. Part one of this process would be to first build a foundation of data and facts so that when we come together as a community to talk about our future, we begin together on the same foundation of factual information, whether that be on land use, our history, our demographics, natural resources, our housing need. And this data and fact-finding effort would serve not just this effort, but the multiple other statutory plans that the town is required to update to be eligible for grant funding, um, and, and other initiatives statewide. Once this data and existing conditions process is complete, conducting a community vision effort. A local comprehensive plan translates our community's vision into our long-range strategic plan. To conduct this community visioning effort, especially in this moment, we're going to need diverse and creative community engagement strategies um, that are adaptive, that have the ability to bring people together, whether it's in person or whether it's first, whether it's virtually. And again, we are going to have to get creative in terms of reaching our community broadly and both reaching deeply into our community, uh, to hear the voice of those who, who may not be as inclined to be engaged. At your next meeting, we propose for your, for your agenda, a supplemental budget appropriation to fund part one, um, of the local comprehensive plan, the data and existing conditions and community visioning. Um, so we can start this work and these community conversations as soon as. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any.
Councilor Callen, please.
Thanks for that presentation. I think it was really well put together. And the thing I like specifically about it is that we all start at ground zero when it comes to the truth. As long as we have data collected that we can call the truth, we can work forward from that particular point as opposed to anecdotal information or I remember when data, or it's always been done that way data. This is, this is definitely the way to go, and I really appreciate the organization. I think one thing that would be really helpful is the database that we talked about in the zoning subcommittee, um, that would help with identifying permitting for each parcel um, and help with, um, also police and fire and kind of coalescing all of that information onto a database that, you know, we can decide if it's public information or is this information for the town. But having that database where everyone's talking to everybody else saves a lot of time and I think is a, a really great way of streamlining the information that we do have. So I think it's an excellent idea. I look forward to seeing what comes out of it. Thank you.
All right. Councilor Clark.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. I appreciate this presentation, Director Jenkins. Um, and we have somewhere an evaluation of what was, um, what were the goals of the 2010, um, local comprehensive plan and what were, what were achieved and what not, what has not been achieved? I'll have to admit that, um, I am, I have been frustrated, uh, being, uh, participated in three cycles of the town's open space and renovation plan evaluations that, um, quite frankly, I don't think anybody's read it. Uh, I don't think that, um, the goals that were put out have been, um, um, uh, followed through and, uh, that there has been any, um, um, uh, faithful, um, what do I want to say, evaluation of what, um, what the, um, evaluation has done. So I would like to, I would hope that whatever plan was, was put together last time, that there was actually some kind of follow-through that, and, um, that we can build upon going forward, not just, um, an exercise to, um, uh, get something done so we can, uh, qualify for, say, grants. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more, Councilor Clark. Um, no planner wants to create a plan that, as we say, sits on the shelf. Um, the true success of a, of a local comprehensive plan is that it reaches citizens, it identifies priorities, and it's continually adapted, um, evaluated, and moved forward. I think the addition of, of elements like performance measures, um, in, in a, a new local comprehensive plan will provide the tools to be, and the framework to be able to keep a new plan relevant and active.
Thank you. Councilor Rafferty, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, and, um, just for the public, right on the planning's webpage is the current one that we're serving under the LCP. And there is visions and goals that are outside. I think one of the ones was to live, um, uh, and work on a smaller environmental footprint, uh, one of our goals. Uh, I'm not sure if we've achieved that or not, but, uh, we certainly are all confined to our little cubicle here. Um, but, uh, I would say that the LCP is an opportunity for citizen engagement, absolutely. And, um, maybe looking, uh, with the manager, looking at, uh, developing any kind of task force. I think maybe citizen engagement on the formation and to, to help better inform the LCP should come from our, our villages. And, uh, so perhaps a, a representative from each civic association can help participate in, in, uh, um, the LCP. And, um, and with regard to, um, you know, citizen engagement, um, the, the Town Council President has the absolute authority to appoint at-large members to serve on any one of these committees, whether it be zoning or, um, you know, the asset management. So just know that, that that tool is available, uh, for more citizen participa- participation.
Thank you, Councilor Rafferty. Great point. Councilor Logan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Elizabeth. First of all, uh, when you were speaking in terms of coastal resiliency, it brought to mind, uh, the events of a couple of days ago when I think three homes in Sandwich were damaged by the storm, one of which found its way into the ocean, at least in part. Um, but we definitely need to be mindful as we develop policies going forward. Secondly, uh, consistent with Councilor Rafferty's comments, as you were speaking on the last couple of slides about manner, manner mechanisms by which to engage this, engage the citizens, I had visions of the Schultes dancing in their living room going, this is exactly what I'm talking about. Uh, so I, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I think it's important to recognize that zoning is, is our really most important and effective policy tool that we have to implement the vision in a local comprehensive plan. So if we're going to start a comprehensive community conversation around zoning, residential, or otherwise, I do believe the place to start is, is the local comprehensive planning process.
Thank you. Councilor Hebert, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, and thank you, Director Jenkins, for a wonderful presentation. And I, I do see that you also have a member of your staff, Autumn Padron, is with you. Uh, and I know later on this evening, what are we talking about? Um, uh, you know, looking at affordable units as one of, one of the projects right now. And, um, so I, I do want to ask you, we're, we're talking about, uh, data and existing, um, conditions. Um, I don't believe that our housing committee has been very active. And I know that they're the responsible, uh, local oversight for, for making sure that affordable units, uh, well done and, uh, you know, how the decision is made and who gets in and out. Um, have, have they been participating in, in these actions that are coming forward?
So the Housing Committee hasn't met recently, again, with the, with the COVID, um, 19 adaptions. Um, they have not been getting together as regularly. Um, they are required to make recommendations on, on certain actions. We haven't had any of those requests come forward. Um, certainly, when I think we, when we're talking about putting together a local comprehensive planning committee, um, I, you know, I think we would want to look at, at representation, um, you know, from these different issue areas, um, whether it be housing, you know, economic development, and, and make sure that, that, again, whether, you know, whether we start with our planning board or whether we start, um, with a different group of citizens to make sure that, that all of those interests are represented, um, in a steering committee that, that moves this process.
Thank you very much. Because as, as you're aware, that, that committee is, um, mostly made up of citizens, um, that are not necessarily attached to any department. So it's, it's a good place for citizens to speak up. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Councilor Hebert. Any other councilor questions or comments? Not seeing anything. I think, uh, yeah, LCP is a, a great way to start and tie things in together. Town Manager L, all right.
I apologize for interrupting.
Okay.
Uh, you're, I'm going to replicate what yours say. I, I strongly support, um, Director Jenkins in bringing this forward. I asked her to look at it, given the COVID situation that we're in and to take into account the time involved. She, she very thoughtfully did that, broken into two phases. Um, I am supportive of her bringing forward a first read next meeting so that we can proceed with phase one. And we have verified, uh, with Director Mill, um, from a financial standpoint, that we can proceed. So hopefully the council will be supportive of this and the future phase when we read that. Uh, to, to the issue of certainly, um, establishing a committee, um, I will discuss that with, um, with Director Jenkins. I'll bring it to leadership and then to the full council, our recommendation to be your consideration. Um, I can assure you that it'll be broadly representative geographically and certainly functionally of our community. Um, and the intent, as Councilor Logan suggested, is to engage our citizens actively in this process. Without it, it won't be a good, um, product. And finally, Councilor Clark's comments. Um, yes, we absolutely want to be clear on our strategies and measure our desired outcomes um, so that we can make sure that we're able to align this with your strategic plan and then illustrate how we have proceeded, uh, or not proceeded, relative to what we establish in that plan. So thank you, Director Jenkins. Thank you, Council, for allowing us this time.
Thank you. Excellent. All right. So moving over to, one of the comments, moving over to acting on amendments, Vice President Shep.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move that we approve the minutes at the town council meeting held on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
The first and the second. The discussion. Assistant Town Clerk, Janet Murphy, if you could do the full call vote.
Town Clerk, that's correct.
Yes.
Bogdan.
Yes.
Clark.
Clark.
Hullett.
Yes.
Dagwell. Rappazetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Avac.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Shawnessy.
Yes.
Star. Steinheilber.
Yes.
Star.
We lost him?
I think.
I don't see him.
Thank you. Going to ask there if he's in the waiting room. There he is.
Counselor Star on the minute.
Star, acting on the minute.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience, everybody. Moving forward to, uh, communication, with officials, board committees, staff, mission reports, correspondence and announcements. Who would like to go first? Anybody? Counselor Steinheilber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a couple of calendar notes. Um, periodically, obviously, the council advisory subcommittees, um, kind of switch up some new members, uh, which we've done on several of our, uh, committees recently. And it's one to note that the zoning and regulatory advisory committee is going to be meeting on, uh, February ninth at five thirty. Uh, no specific items or recommendations, uh, more of a informational agenda. Uh, we're going to get an update on, uh, zoning along Route one thirty-two. Um, and also an update on just some discussions over, um, inclusionary zoning regulations, economic development task forces. I just started a conversation on that. Um, and we just wanted to get a little bit of information about what that, what that is and what that entails. And then also on, uh, February seventeenth, uh, the asset management advisory committee will be meeting. Uh, we'll be looking at, uh, several parcels that might, uh, come forward for a possible disposition. Uh, we'll be looking at a couple of parcels, um, that we're identifying as, uh, portable housing possibility locations. And we'll also be getting an update on the, uh, Parsons Mills and the Kewett, uh, elementary school. So I wanted to take note of those two upcoming meetings.
Excellent. Thank you for that updating. It's most important. Um, I appreciate mentioning that. I was going to mention it too. Thank you. Um, any other? I just like to, oh, I'm sorry, Vice President Shep.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I was glad that Keith Sonnenbrenn was able to share the stories of the heroism of our police officers, um, on Tuesday night, or Tuesday, February second. Um, but I, I'd like to share, uh, a little-known, uh, story of another hometown hero. Many of you heard about the rescue efforts of the airplane that left Martha's Vineyard and crashed near Worcester. Um, there was, uh, note of a snowmobile that, uh, helped in the rescue effort. But there was also, um, the first responders were actually from the Leicester Fire Department. And one of our residents from Marson's Mills, a twenty-year-old Drew Dalton, was one of the two, uh, first responders on the scene, uh, in helping in that rescue effort. Uh, he's a junior at Anna Marie College and, uh, is an on-call firefighter. And I just wanted to let everyone know because his name appeared in none of the news stories, but he really, uh, did the yeoman's work in, in helping in that rescue effort.
Very good. Thank you, Vice President Shep. Uh, just to keep everybody, um, tuned, I went and attended the, uh, school committee meeting as a liaison of a in, in president of the town council. I thought it was important to attend the first budgetary discussions that they had. I was a great presentation, uh, detail, they actually cried, uh, you know, they acknowledged the meeting that we had, the joint meeting we had, and some of the points, um, vision ideas, things of that nature. I encourage anybody go and watch that presentation that was made. It was towards the end of the year, I don't know the exact time. They quote tape, so you don't necessarily need to watch the whole thing. Um, obviously, it was also a lively discussion. We got the mascot, kind of discussion they use for Bonneville High School. Uh, but, uh, it, again, addressed and dealt well with our last joint meeting with them, um, in late January. So I just wanted to let everybody know on that. And also, uh, wanted to let people know, the public know, counselors know, uh, that the Farmers to Families, uh, food box program is going to, it will be this Saturday, once again, at the transportation center. And you have to put the Mass Military Support Foundation. And, um, go to their website, rather, I'm sorry, and register, Mass Military Support Foundation, M M S F I dot org. And again, from ten to one, the Saturday, you can buy, and pick your own fresh food. But, uh, again, it's not, uh, there's no requirements. Anybody that's just looking, you know, get a break and, um, get food, that'll go off. But I appreciate that. Um, again, there's no further council communications. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Shawnessy.
Thank you, President Levesque. I just wanted to take a minute, um, to say a little something about one of our local businesses, the Main Street Hyannis, that it's one of my favorites, and to me, it is a true jewel of Main Street in a hidden gem, and that's Me Pueblo. Um, the family that operates that restaurant, the Valdivinos family, in the last two and a half weeks have suffered two incredible tragedies as a result of COVID. On, on January seventeenth, their father Ramon was taken due to COVID. He was honored, um, in twenty sixteen for saving the life of a twenty-nine-year-old woman in South Yarmouth who almost drowned. On the twenty-ninth, um, son and brother Enrique also fell to COVID. And I just, I just want to bring it up because I'm really asking the community any way that we can show this family our support. They have two GoFundMe pages to help with funeral expenses. They've had to shut down the restaurant for two weeks quarantining, had a loss of business. But if there's any way we can show this family our love, the food is authentic, delicious, and made with so much love. And I would really ask us as a community to rally around this family. Thanks.
Attorney John Kenny that's coming here filling in his pitch hearing for Attorney Lawler tonight on the next couple of items. Appreciate you being here. So if everybody's waiting on. Counselor Neary, are you there? Oh, we do have quorum. Nobody has an objection, I think we should get going. Into the orders of the day. First item of all business is item number two zero two one dash zero five eight. And I'd ask Counselor Steinheilber to read that directly, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to open the public hearing on item twenty twenty one dash zero five eight. Amending the zoning map of the town of Barnstable to expand the multifamily affordable housing district to include map two fifty. Parcel one sixty at three Whitehall Way, Hyannis, Massachusetts. It's written the two thirds of a.
Second.
You have a motion of second and the public hearing is now open and we give the rationale, please.
Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, provide a brief introduction and I'll turn it over to Attorney Kenny for additional rationale. This is a proposed amendment to the zoning map of the town to expand the multifamily affordable housing district. To include a parcel at three Whitehall Way. This parcel is adjacent to the one other parcel in the town of Barnstable that is zoned MAH. The rezoning of this parcel will facilitate the redevelopment of the property at eight fifty Falmouth Road. Into fifty-three units of multifamily residential housing. The developer has proposed to restrict development on the property at three Whitehall Way. But but seeks to rezone the property. To allow for increases in density and lot coverage on the development. This proposal was considered by the planning board at a public hearing. The planning board unanimously voted to recommend to recommend this zoning map amendment to the town. And with that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Kenny for additional rationale.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Do you think, Mr. President, members of the town council for the record, my name's John Kenny. An attorney with a law office in Centerville and as Mr. President stated, I am pinching tonight. Attorney David Lawler, David is the attorney for Standard Holdings LLC. He had a conflict tonight and was unable to make it and asked me if I could step in for him. I believe Mr. Tillman and or Mr. Colton may be sitting in the bullpen or Mr. Tillman has joined us. Mr. Tillman and Mr. Colton are the two principals behind Standard Holdings LLC. Two weeks ago Attorney Lawler appeared before you, he discussed the housing project as Elizabeth just discussed. It's with fifty-three units at eight fifty Falmouth Road. Forty-three would be market rate and ten would be affordable if the proposed zoning amendments are adopted tonight. The purpose of this first one is simply to expand the MAH zoning district by incorporating the property three Whitehill Way. Into the MAH that would allow this prop that property to be absorbed into. The eight the project at eight fifty Falmouth Road and allow the project to meet the density requirements of the MAH district. Lot or setback requirements and open space requirement. So it's a kind of a pretty straightforward matter, it's a small approximately one third acre lot, it's own residential. And it's being cooked, we're requesting to have it incorporated in the MAH district. To assist the development of the eight fifty Falmouth Road property.
Thank you Attorney Kenny. As we mentioned, this is a public hearing. Is anybody for a public comment in the queue? Sarah, anybody in the queue?
Nope, there's no public comment at this time.
Okay. Then I will close the public hearing and have a council, open up the council discussions, any comments on it? Counselor Hebert, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to speak on behalf of, this is a well thought out. Great use of a property long and disrepair. It's going to provide some much needed housing, I think that the offers for the affordable and the. Number of units that they want to put forward is going to be very, very helpful in our trying to help citizens to find decent housing. So I'm in great favor of this item and I'll be voting in the affirmative. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Any more council discussion? Counselor Steinheilber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to follow along with Counselor Hebert, our precinct's actually kind of a butt right along Route twenty-eight there. When I first ran for council in twenty thirteen, the property was in disrepair then and it was a topic of a lot of conversations going door to door and. Here we are almost eight years later on the doorstep of new development there, so. Just glad to see things coming together and I certainly encourage my fellow counselors to support their efforts tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Steinheilber. Any other comments? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll still tag one, I'm sorry. Thank you, Counselor Dagwan. Any other discussion? Okay. I would move to roll call again, two thirds majority vote. Just the town clerk, Jan Murphy.
Counselors, Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan. Rob Presetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leve.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Johnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Axles.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
Excellent. Moving on to item number two zero two one dash zero five nine, Counselor Steinheilber, if you could also read this record and open the public.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to open the public hearing on item twenty twenty one dash zero five nine. Amending Article Three, Chapter Two Forty, Section sixteen point one. Of the zoning ordinance to modify the required percentage of affordable units and revise the definition of affordable unit in Article. Eleven, Chapter Two Forty, Section one sixteen of the zoning ordinance to exempt development under the multifamily affordable housing MAH. From growth management. It's the two thirds vote as written.
First and second. And our public hearing is open and rationale, please.
Good evening, Counselors. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. This is a proposed amendment to the text. Of the zoning ordinance. The amendment is in two parts. The first is a proposed modification to the text of the multifamily affordable housing district. To modify the affordability requirements of the district, the district require currently requires. Twenty-five percent of all units in a development to be deemed restricted affordable for residents at sixty-five percent of the area median income. The proposal is to modify those requirements to require eighteen percent of the units in the development. To be affordable to residents at fifty percent of the area median income. This change will allow the projects to be eligible for the housing development incentive program. And diverse while at the same time diversifying the range of affordable units that are being provided in our community. I'll note that the that the council did vote to include this parcel in the housing development incentive program zone. At our last meeting, at their last meeting. Second part of this is really a clarification that will be provided in the growth management section of our ordinance. Which limits the rate at which building permits can be issued in our community. Clearly, this district was created to incentivize the construction of multifamily housing. While the the growth management ordinance is intended to limit development in areas where there may not be the infrastructure. In place to support it. So I feel like I feel that those two, these two objections are in conflict and that this amendment. Again, will clarify that this development would not be subject to those building permit limitations in the ordinance. The planning board did consider the zoning, the zoning amendment at a public hearing. And unanimously voted to recommend adoption to the town. With that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Kenny for additional rationale.
Thank you again, Elizabeth. And again, I'm Council President, members of the town council for the record, John Kenny and Attorney Lawler from. Centerville coming you from Vice President Schnep's district tonight from my home in Austin's Mill. This this proposed amendment, Counselor, is essentially designed to bring. Well, as I said, two weeks ago Attorney Lawler appeared in front of you and you voted to recommend these parcels be included in the. Home develop housing developments incentive program. These amendments are designed to bring the H DIP qualification requirements for state investment tax credits. And coordinate them with the MHA, MAH zoning district requirements in our zoning ordinance. As Elizabeth just stated, the MAH requires twenty-five percent affordable housing. The H DIP program requires eighty percent market rate housing. So the purpose of the first amendment to change the twenty-five percent affordable housing down to eighteen percent. This will allow for the forty-three market rate units into ten percent. Affordable units in the proposed project at eight fifty Falmouth Road to qualify for the H DIP and state investment tax credit. The second part of that is. The current MAH requirement is for sixty-five percent of the. Affordable housing units that should be available to people who have make sixty-five percent or less of the area median income. That is the standard in the MAH, but as part of the negotiation for the reduction in the number of units. I believe I believe town staff negotiated and the applicants agreed to reduce it down to fifty percent AMI. So that people that are make a little bit less money have a better chance or have a highly increased chance of getting these these. Badly needed rental units. So it really serves an underutilized segment of our population and particularly in the rental housing market. And then the final is, as Elizabeth explained, is to add an exemption. To the growth management section of the zoning ordinance to exempt these units from the cap on building permits. In the in the growth management section of the zoning ordinance. So that other people can get full building permits besides fifty-three that would be issued to this proposed project. But as you would vote in favor, we're trying to bring the MAH requirements and the H DIP requirements that we can coordinate them. This project can qualify for the badly needed state investment tax credits to allow this whole project to get financing and move forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. And as I stated earlier, Mr. Tillman, one of the principals is also on board here.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Jenkins. Thank you for your opinion. Any question, discussion from the town council? Counselor Starr, please.
Thank you, President Leve. I had a question for Ms. Jenkins. Does this multifamily affordable. Housing, does it does it affect more than just this property? I mean, are we changing it for, are there other properties involved? Are we just changing it for this one?
Apparently, this is the only property in the town of Barnstable that is zoned MAH, multifamily affordable housing. So it's specific to this. You know, I I do like to think that this combination that that we've essentially created of zoning and tax incentives. Is one that might have the potential to work in other locations in town. So while this is the only one now. Perhaps it's a model for future development going forward.
Okay. And I want one quick clarification. So how many units are we talking about altogether?
Total of fifty-three units, forty-three market and ten affordable.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other comments? Counselor Hebert.
Two comments if I could, Mr. President, thank you. One, do we have to open this for a public hearing? Just nobody comes back after. And if if I can still speak before you do the public hearing, I would just. Finish by saying that this is a wonderful example of using some great financing. Using the state investment tax credit. Congratulations on a well planned out facility. I think it's a very best use of this acreage and will create exactly what I was talking about when we started this evening. When one of our people who did come for public comment, Henry Ramaj. When when I talked back, when I replied to him was about real affordable housing. So. This doing it for fifty percent is what I'm talking about. And I thank the developers for really doing something great for our community. And again, I will be voting in favor of this item. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other council comment? Counselor Bogan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And former President Hebert stole my thunder a little bit. I I think this is a win-win. I commend the staff and the developer. The reduction reduction from twenty-five to eighteen percent is just rational. It's very difficult to have development if we rigidly adhere to the twenty-five percent. And at the same time, I think the quid pro quo is the reduction from the sixty-five percent AMI to fifty percent for those units that would be affordable. So. I commend the developer in that regard. And like President, former President Hebert, I will be voting.
And. Sarah, is anybody in the queue for public comment?
No public comment at this time.
I'll close the public hearing. Any other council discussion? Full move. Very good. Town Clerk Jan Murphy, if you can have the roll call majority for Hebert's case.
Counselors, Clark.
Yeah.
Cullum. Dagwan. Rob Presetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leve.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Johnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Axles.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
Excellent. Congratulations. Mr. Tillman, and I see your background there. Is the is the complex going to look like your background?
Not exactly.
Well, thank you for your investment in our town and appreciate your time, Attorney Kenny, and. And for the rationales, Director Jenkins. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Make one comment, please. I want to thank the town for their support and their direction. It's been a great process. And in listening to the earlier direction about planning and for the town. The way they approach this with us, I can see how there could be a comprehensive thought process going forward. So. I can't say enough about, you know, Elizabeth and her team and how they supported this and gave us great direction. And to the counselors, I want to thank you. We want to thank you from the bottom of our heart for the support of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, too. Okay, moving on to my next order of business. If I could have Counselor Nicholas Axelis read item twenty twenty one dash zero six seven and open a public hearing, please.
This is item twenty twenty one zero six seven. Corporation order in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of acquiring an easement. On a portion of the property located at five twenty-eight Craigville Beach Road in Barnstable, actually Centerville. Shown on assessor's map two forty-six as parcel zero seven one. To be associated with the construction of new sewer infrastructure. This is a roll call majority, full council.
Second.
As written.
Second.
Thank you. And I'd like to open the public hearing as well on this item and. Get the rationale, please.
Good evening, Mr. President and town counselors, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. Town is proceeding with plans to install sewers and related infrastructure as part of the Strawberry Hill Road sewer expansion project. Town engineers have identified the property at five twenty-eight Craigville Beach Road as an ideal technical location for the construction of a sewer pump station. Citing this infrastructure in this location would significantly reduce excavation depths and construction costs. And removes the need to site a pump station at the property at O'Callaghan Beach, which is currently in flood plain. Direct negotiations with the property owners produced an agreement that damages or an eminent domain taking of an easement will be in the amount of forty thousand dollars. This comprehensive agreement will be executed by both the owners and the town, subject to your approval. It is anticipated that an order of taking will be recorded after thirty days of pass from the council vote. Whereupon the easement would transfer to the town. An additional five thousand dollars has been added for costs associated with this taking, including title examination, recording fees, et cetera. The acquisition of this easement is essential to the anticipated Strawberry Hill sewer expansion project, as well as future sewer expansion in the region. Citing sewer infrastructure in this location will reduce sewer excavation depths and significantly reduce construction costs. The acquisition of this parcel by eminent domain taking has been thoroughly discussed with the owners and their council. They have agreed to the compensation resolution, their prospective claim for eminent domain damage. Utilizing the eminent domain procedure will assure clear title to the property and allow engineering staff to include the easement in the sewer construction plan. There is no annual operating budget impact as a result of acquiring this easement. Funding for the acquisition will be provided from the available reserves in the sewer construction, private way maintenance and improvement. Special revenue fund, which has an available balance of fourteen point seven million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Get us a public hearing. Any, Sarah, anybody in the queue for comment on this item?
No comment at this time.
Thank you. Close the public hearing. Council discussion. Counselor Hebert, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this citing is an excellent place where it's cited. It happens to be in precinct three, is very visible from precinct four. But precinct three is very happy to take this first step in getting a pumping station going to move our plans ahead for. Our wastewater system here. And I also wanted to thank the. Department of Public Works and Dan Santos and Griffin Boarding for their great work. Also in the citing of it, well thought through, it's not right on the corner so that. Visibility between Craigville Beach Road and Strawberry Hill Road is not going to be obstructed by this. Which is sometimes a little dangerous corner there. It's an excellent project, well cited, going to save us money. And I'm I'm very pleased that I will be voting. And I'm very pleased that I will be voting in favor of this on behalf of precinct three. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hebert. Any other comment? Attorney McLaughlin, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a brief comment to add thanks to Dan and Rob, particularly Griffin, in their efforts to work with the owner on this property. And thanks to the owners and council, a real pleasure to work with. Just on the informational side, it won't be part of the taking, but we have had a very productive discussion about the owner's concerns of investigating traffic safety and related issues in that immediate vicinity. And we are entering, subject to drafting, more frankly, and subject to manager's approval, a memorandum of understanding with respect to good faith efforts to expand on some safety studies in that area to see what can be done to slow traffic down and make that a much safer corner, especially for cars entering onto Craigville Beach Road from Strawberry Hill. So it's been a good project all around. I learned a lot of lessons from street campaign. It went very smoothly with excellent outreach. I just want to compliment the DBW staff on the reference too.
Thank you. But I got a few more. The communication, I was present at the Southern Civic Association, which Director Santos presented there. And it was very well-attended, great questions. And basically just people are comfortable with what's going on. So I appreciate your confidence. Anything more with that, with the staff on the level? Any other comments, discussion? Council Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Director Santos, is this the parcel that typically has a produce stand in the summer? Or is this the parcel just adjacent to that?
I didn't hear what you said was there.
Is, they have like a little garden stand. I don't want to call it a farm, but they always have a produce stand out on Craigville Beach Road.
I don't know. I'm not aware of that. No, I, you, sorry.
Counsel Axelis.
No, excuse me. Are you referring to the little country store next to the pizza shop?
No.
This is the corner of Strawberry Hill and
No, no, I'm not talking about where I get fresh corn.
The farm, the farm stand you're talking about, that's the owner of this particular parcel. But that's not where he sets up his, that's not where he sets up his farm stand or fresh vegetables and kale that you get.
Okay.
This is right on the corner by the stop sign at the end of Strawberry Hill Road and Craigville Beach Road, the left-hand side as you're heading south.
Right. Thank you.
Sorry for jumping in there, Griffin. That was probably your job.
Council Hebert, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, just a clarification from Council Shaughnessy. I believe you're talking if you're going into town, passing Strawberry Hill Road, it's about one property up, they run a little farm, and occasionally they would put something out there, but it's not the same corner. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hebert. Any other discussion? Okay. Town Clerk Jennifer Murphy, roll call majority of the full council.
Counselors. Hullem.
Yes.
Dagwone. Raper Seti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Asplu.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark. Thirteen yes.
Excellent. Congratulations, everybody. Again, moving on to the next order of business, this is item number twenty-two-one dash zero-six-eight. If Counselor Hullem could read this into the record, but just, it's, there's an error in the wording. It's actually roll call majority vote. Doesn't have to be roll call majority of the full council. Thank you.
Yes, so item number twenty-two-one dash authorized housing development incentive program tax exemption agreement between the town of Barnstable and Pearl Street Holdings LLC for nine new market rate residential units located at thirty-nine Pearl's Hyannis may be acted upon the roll call majority vote.
Excellent. And before we get the rationale, I did want to welcome Mr. Jake Dewey to our meeting. I'm sure he'll be able to answer any questions as well. But if we can move forward with the rationale, please.
Sure, I'm gonna do that. Good evening, Arden Cadran, the Housing Coordinator. So I'm here to introduce this item, which is a tax increment exemption request as part of our housing development incentive program. In two thousand and eighteen, the town of Barnstable adopted a housing development incentive zone and, which is part of the housing development incentive program from the state. The goals of that program are to increase our residential growth, expand the diversity of our housing stock, and support economic development and neighborhood stabilization. So this is an incentive program for market rate residential development. It allows us to provide tax relief to market rate residential units that are within the zone. Heard a lot about that tonight, that zone. The relief comes in the form from a tax relief from ten percent to a hundred percent of the increased value of the property for a period of from five to twenty years. This local tie then allows a developer to move to the state to request tax credits for the property as well. They do need to have a local tie in order to qualify for those local tax credits. The town council's tax incentive subcommittee did meet and review this application for thirty-nine Pearl Street, and they do recommend full approval, recommend approval by the full council. And I'm going to let Jake Dewey, the developer of the property, describe the property to you in more detail, but I will remain available for any questions regarding the type of process or the H-TIP zone.
Excellent. Thanks, I really appreciate the rationale there. And now we're opening to our council discussions. Any comments, questions? Council Hebert, please.
And once again, thank you very, very much. It's a very exciting evening when it comes to affordable housing in our community. I have, well, as many councils have visited the site. Mr. Dewey has done an awesome job. He fit all those units in. And again, congratulations to Elizabeth Jenkins and her team. I think that his first thought was only so many units, but he was informed that he could fit more units in there in a space that was practically unnoticedable before. But now he's made a beautiful, beautiful thing there. And again, this is right up the alley, and we have to do everything we can to help developers who want to create this kind of housing for our community. So congratulations, Mr. Dewey, and congratulations to the Planning Department. And again, this is something that I will be certainly voting in favor of, of beautiful development. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Hebert. Councilor Starr, please.
Oh, thank you. My question is, we're not voting on numbers, right? We're just voting to let the TIE committee decide what the numbers are gonna be?
No, no, they did decide that. So that is part of the draft tie.
It's not in the order.
It's in the document, the draft tie that is, that should be supplied to everybody as part of. So that I can tell you what that request is. You got it?
I got it. Thank you. Okay. I have another question though, please. Is, can any of these, these units be rented as short-term rentals?
No, the Housing Development Incentive Program requires that these units are twelve-month leases.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Starr. Councilor Raper Seti, please.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate Mr. Dewey's continued involvement in furthering the town's houses. These are gonna be two-bedroom units and one and a half baths. And you're retailing them for eighteen hundred dollars a month. Is that the proposal on this? And just, just as an ode, you've named them the Captain Burris residences. And I don't know if anybody remembers, but Captain Burris's house was there and sustained fire damage, which caused it to be demolished. I think that's the case, Jake Dewey. But thank you for your ode to Captain Burris.
Yes, the proposed rents are eighteen hundred a month. You know, we're working on pretty thin margins, trying to keep the rents as close to a moderate market rate rent. The high school road project, we were at seventeen hundred. Unfortunately, in the last year, we've seen a pretty significant increase in construction costs. So to absorb that, we had to go up a little bit with rent. But the market did respond, you know, in the fact that the high school road units were fully leased and within about two weeks, we had over twenty-five applicants. So the demand is definitely there for moderate market rate rent.
Great. Thank you.
And yes, it did. That was the Captain Burris Lodge that burned down. Now, I guess that's about ten years ago, and then was demolished after it burned.
Love the history lesson. Thank you. Vice President Schnapp.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is just more of a process question. Given that this project is in the, is, does this fall under a regulatory agreement or does it fall under some other type of permitting?
Director Jenkins?
This process, again, is in the Grafton Center Zone, would not trigger a Cape Cod Commission threshold. Mr. Dewey is seeking to permit this project under our zoning as a right.
As a right. Okay, great.
So with a site plan review process.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Thank you, Vice President Schnapp. Any other, looking for hands, any other comments, questions? Council discussion. Seeing none, I would move to roll call majority vote.
Counselors. Dagwone. Raper Seti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Asplu.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark. Hullem.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Excellent. Congratulations, Jake. Thank you, Arden, for your presentation, your participation, and great work. Jake, really appreciate you.
Thank you. And again, I will echo Mr. Tellman and just thank the Planning Development Staff, Arden, and Elizabeth for their help with all parts of this. It's really been incredible, both on this project and the other project, how much they've helped me and how much they've taught me. So hopefully we can get more people doing it and happy to help support others to try to come forward as well to utilize the program. So thank you all for your support.
Appreciate you being part of the solution. Moving on, that's the last order of old business. Moving on to new business. Councilor Raper Seti, if you could read into the record, item number twenty-two-one dash zero-seven zero.
Yes, Mr. President. This is new business. This is the first reading. We refer to a second reading to February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Item twenty-two-one zero-seven zero, points to a board committee or commission that we appoint the following individuals to multiple member board committee or commission. For the Barnstable Historical Commission, Jack Kay, from an alternate member to a regular member who term expires in six-thirty-twenty-one. The Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, Adam Carter is a regular member who term expiring six-thirty-twenty-one. Charles McKenzie is a regular member who term expiring three-thirty-two thousand and twenty-two. For the Human Services Committee, Carlos Barbosa is a regular member who term expiring three-thirty-two thousand and twenty-three. And the Licensing Authority, John G. Flores is a regular member who term expiring six-thirty-two thousand and twenty-two. Zoning Board of Appeals, Aaron Webb, as an associate member who term expiring six-thirty-two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you. And if we could get a vote, please.
Counselors. Raper Seti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Asplu.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hullem.
Yes.
Dagwone. Thirteen yes.
Excellent. Councilor Shaughnessy, could you please read item number twenty-two-one dash zero-seven-one into the record and refer to public hearing on February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one?
With pleasure, President Levesque. This is new business, refer to public hearing on two-eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Item number twenty-two-one dash zero-seven-one, supplemental appropriation order in the amount of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one airport operating budget for the purpose of funding airport website redevelopment services as
Excellent. Thank you for reading that and
Second.
Thank you. And now we have a first and a second. If we could get a roll call, get a vote, a roll call vote, please.
Clark about that. Counselors. Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Asplu.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hullem.
Yes.
Dagwone. Raper Seti.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. Vice President Schnapp, if you could please read item number twenty-two-one dash zero-seven-two.
Yes, Mr. President. This is an item of new business, item twenty-two-one, authorizing the town manager to enter into and execute, excuse me, execute on behalf of the town an employment contract with Mark A. Mill to serve as director of finance. This may be acted upon by roll call majority.
Second.
Second, town manager, rationale?
Good evening, Markell Town Manager. I'm asking for your authorization to enter into employment contract with Director of Finance, Mark Mill. This would be a five-year contract, therefore requiring the authorization of the town council. I don't believe I need to speak to the satisfaction of Mr. Mill's performance. And I am privileged to serve with Mark here for the town of Barnstable, and I hope that you will support my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markell Town Manager. Any council discussion? Done. Okay, council discussion, then we'll move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Asplu.
Yes.
Bogan.
With pleasure. Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hullem.
Yes.
Dagwone. Raper Seti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes, yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item of business, Counselor Bogan, if you could read into the record, twenty-two-one dash zero-seven-three and refer to and refer to a second reading, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Yes, I will. Item twenty-two-one dash zero-seven-three is an item of new business to be referred to a second reading on February eighteenth. Takes authorization of a tax increment financing agreement among the town of Barnstable, Wordsmith Inc. Incorporated and S.B. Nominee Trust for the property located at twelve fifty-four Main Street, Astorville, Massachusetts. Assessor's map one-nineteen and parcel zero-five-six as written.
Okay.
Excellent. Now, first and a second, again, it's the first reading, refer to a second reading on February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. If we can move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Pollam.
Yes.
Dagwans. Rappaport Cetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
Thank you. Next order of business, um, Counsel Neary, if you could please read item number twenty-two-one dash zero-seven-four and refer to a public hearing on February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business. It's the first reading. Could be referred to a public hearing on February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It's a supplemental appropriation order in the amount of thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars for the Barnstable Police Department fiscal year twenty-twenty-one operating budget for the purpose of funding the hiring of three current parole officer vacant, as written.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you. First and a second, again, referring to a public hearing on February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. To move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Neff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Pollam.
Yes.
Dagwans. Rappaport Cetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
Excellent. Great meeting, everybody. Um, that was the last order of business and um, we're next to the most important agenda.
A move?
Second.
First and a second, you have a vote, please.
Counselors. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Pollam.
Yes.
Dagwans. Rappaport Cetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
Excellent. Great job, everybody. Thank you all the directors who participated. Uh, a lot of great information tonight. Thank you for everyone.
Night, everyone.
Have a nice night.